Okay, so at 6:30 we'll open the public hearing. The Winterville City Council will hold two public hearings Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, at 5:30 PM, and Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in Winterville City Hall to receive public input regarding the proposed City of Winterville budget for the year 2022. Those wishing to address mayor and city council are required to sign up on a form provided by the city prior to the commencement of the hearing. Wendy, do you have our sign-up sheet?
No one's signed up.
No one's signed up? Anyone wish to speak? We're a small town. Everybody good? Okay.
You're still not. I have it.
Oh, no? Okay. It should be, you should start to see it in about 60 seconds. I think it's got a bit of a delay, but we're going live, so it'll be picked up. In like 10 seconds. So, okay, well with that, we will close the second public hearing regarding the budget, and we will open the regular city council meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to God, to our United States of America, to a new republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so everybody's gotten a copy of the minutes, including the two public hearings from last week, last week's workshop. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to amend the thing that said that first public hearing would be at 5:00 instead of 5:30?
I think we should. Yeah. So, can I have a, can you make that in the form of a motion?
Okay. Yeah. I move that we amend the first paragraph under unfinished business to say that the public hearing held on Tuesday, November 2nd would be at 5:30.
Okay. Okay. So I have an amended amendment to the motion. David, are you good with that? You're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. I have an amendment to the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Thank you for catching that. We discussed it last week. Okay, unfinished business. We have been discussing Winterville PD and body cameras and chiefs back there. We've been talking about it, too. We did get a late quote yesterday, so I think council needs time to look at this. So I think we should table this until next month and have some more discussion about it. But this is a state quote, so it should be the final numbers that we need to look at for the body cameras for Winterville PD. So could I have a motion to table this agenda item until next month?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to new business, I think we need to make an adjustment or an amendment.
I move that we amend item number two and remove the word draft, so it just reads 2022 budget vote.
Okay, from the agenda. Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. All right, so we have a guest tonight for the first item up on our agenda, and councilperson Mooney has brought her to us. Thank you for being here, Tammy Cordell, youth vocational program for CCSD students. The mic is all yours.
Okay. So I just want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to talk to you all quickly about the work-based learning programs that we have here in Clark County. My name's Tammy Cordell. I am the work-based learning coordinator at Cedar Shoals High School. I'm also a citizen of Winterville and have been since 2004. I actually live right down the road in Winterville Station with my husband and eight-year-old daughter. So I kind of had a vested interest in wanting to come to the citizens of Winterville, not only because Winterville is, not only because Cedar Shoals is the high school that feeds into Winterville, but also as like a citizen of wanting to see y'all, you know, improve the organization, the community, and the agencies that are here in this area. So as far as the work-based learning program, have any of y'all heard of that? It's, okay, it might have been back years ago, it was called DCT, diversified cooperative training. Well, this is just, it's a program, and we have it throughout Clark County schools. So there's a work-based learning coordinator at Cedar, there's one at Clark Central, and there's also one at the Athens Community Career Academy. And this is a program that gives students the opportunity, if they're on track for graduation, they can either leave school early or come in late to go to work or an internship. And so we're always in need of placements for our students, which we call partners, to kind of host some of our students. And these positions can be paid or unpaid. But our students have minimum requirements that they have to fulfill. They're students that are on track for graduation, they have to have at least a 2.5, they have to have had an introductory career tech class so that they have employability skills. They also have to have reliable transportation, and they also have to have recommendations from their teachers and counselors. And so we're hoping, just to kind of get the word out, first, we're trying to build the program at Cedar Shoals, because right now I only have seven students. For the past four years, they've had a different coordinator in the position, so I'm hoping that I'm here to stay and that I'll be able to kind of increase our numbers and opportunities for our students here in Clark County. As far as what we're looking for, there's a variety of things in addition to having a placement. It can be paid or unpaid, like I said. We also need partners who are willing to come in and talk about certain business and industries in the area, maybe even serve as a mentor or role model for some of our students. So I wanted to go ahead and reach out to y'all so you could hot a face with a program. And I'm going to give Amanda my contact information, but these students actually, so, you know, whereas you might be kind of hesitant to hire a part-time employee for part-time work, because, you know, they, sometimes they don't show up, you know, they're tardy. As far as our students, they have to show up on time, they have to be there when they're supposed to be, because their employment is tied to a grade. Okay? So they have more skin in the game than your average entry-level worker. And then, of course, their parents are also having to sign off that they're willing to fulfill some of the duties and support their child in the program as well. So it's really beneficial to the business partners or agency partners to, you know, host some of our students. So I'm going to go ahead and send you my, you have my contact information. Does anyone have any questions about the work-based learning program? I don't know. Did I cover everything?
I think so.
I had a whole presentation, but, you know.
No, I know when we met, I just thought, what you're doing is amazing, you're such an advocate for our youth here locally, and I thought there's a lot of, like, really good potential partnerships with either the city itself or Winterville, you know, business owners.
Right. We, you know, our students, I mean, some of the students are in unpaid internships because they just want the opportunity for the experience to make sure it is a field that they want to pursue. Also, it's something that looks really good on their resume. We have students who are in unpaid interns at Flagpole or Athens Downtown Development Authority. So, and we have, these are really good students, these are students with like 4.4 GPAs, so you are getting a good, solid candidate for the positions here. The thing about the CTA, we have something that's called career technical agricultural education. And so for our students to participate in work-based learning, they had to have had at least one of those classes, because those entry-level classes really hone in the employability skills, those soft skills that employers really want workers to possess. So you're getting a good, solid candidate when you agree to become a partner with our work-based learning program. And work-based learning is a program that's throughout the country. In fact, I think almost every school system in the state of Georgia has a work-based learning program, and it's something that has been a while, along for, it's been around for a while, it's just kind of been given a new name. We're moving away from the term vocational and moving more into career technical education, because these pathways really lead to high-scale, high-wage jobs. Okay? Yes, sir.
Are the positions that you're seeking strictly in the technical fields, or are they also potentially in academic-based fields?
They could be, because students can be pathway completers and academics as well. But we, the 16 career clusters, really in Georgia, we have 17 career clusters, because we have the addition of energy that the feds do not. So pretty much all of our career clusters and pathways cover 99% of the jobs that you're going to be able to do. So what, what areas are you?
So I'm the director of the doctors museum around the corner, and we're getting started with, you know, research and identifying a number of different topics that we can use to incorporate into the museum, and so I'm thinking of like a research assistant or something.
Oh, absolutely. Totally, yes. That would be, that would be a wonderful opportunity. I know another area that we also need a lot is sometimes forensic, law enforcement, public safety, graphic designs. Like, right now, we have a very talented student who's completing a pathway in graphic design. He's working on his English, but he's got real, real talent. He doesn't have room in his schedule to do work-based learning per se, because he wants to complete the three-course sequence. He wants to complete the intro, the intermediate, and the advanced class in graphic design, so he can be considered a pathway completer. But we really need, are looking for somebody who can kind of help mentor him and navigate that field. So there's more opportunities than just providing a placement for the students to work. And also, one of the things I forgot to mention is that the students, like I said, they leave, either leave work, leave school early after second period, and they might go to work for third to fourth period, or they might come in late because they went to work first and second period. But for every period that they have on their schedule, they have to work a minimum of seven hours. So if they are scheduled for two periods of work-based learning, that means the partner would hopefully have, would give them at least 14 hours of work a week. And it doesn't have to be during the school week, it can be during the weekend as well, as long as they just get their minimum hours. It doesn't matter when they are. So thank y'all very much for the opportunity to talk. Hopefully, y'all can, you know, get the word out about work-based learning. If you have any students of your own that are interested, please, by all means, send them my way. And if there's no other questions, I guess I'm going to head back.
So thank you for the presentation. I think, so we started our business leaders lunches back last, or last month? So I think a good opportunity would be connecting with our DDA and business leaders at the next lunch, and maybe making your full presentation to everybody at that lunch to give everybody some ideas, because they, a lot of our business owners here are also reaching to Athens and other areas, so it'd be a good connection for you.
It would.
And good for us, too, because all our students going through Winterville, Monroe Coyle, and into Cedar. So thank you for being here.
Yes, thank y'all so much. It was good to meet some of y'all and meet some of my fellow Wintervilles.
Yes, thank you for everything you're doing for our students.
Yeah, I love it. I just hope that they let me stay in the job, so I'm going to be here. But I'm sort of, the problem is, in the past, the coordinators were not certified teachers and didn't have that CTA credential, uncertified and other credentials. So hopefully, they'll keep me in the job, and we can really start building this program so that our students can really benefit, and so can our community and business members.
Yep.
Absolutely.
We hope so, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
See you. You, too, thanks.
You, too.
All right. So moving on to item number two, we've had our two public hearings, we now have the budget, the 2022 budget, right on time in November for approval. So if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the 2022 budget for the City of Winterville.
I move that we adopt the 2022 budget for the City of Winterville.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the 2022 budget for the City of Winterville. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for that. And Gary, thank you for all the hard work there and the finance committee, everybody involved and department heads. We appreciate all your hard work every year for that. The budget's changing, so we appreciate it. Item number three, we've also had our public hearings. The HPC has had their public hearings, they've worked for a very long time on the boundaries and the guidelines. As I stated at the workshop last week, they, they get pretty close to our original national registered district guidelines, and I think everybody on this council and on the preservation commission and in the city, citizens participating in this have gotten us to a point where I think, I think we can move forward. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the boundaries, historic boundaries for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Before we have a motion, this body voted in August to table this vote until the Munich Code revisions had been discussed, and that has not happened.
Correct. And for the public's knowledge, the Munich Code provisions should be back at the end of November, but we as a body are able to move forward with a new motion to approve these boundaries. And if I've misstated that, David, please correct me.
Yeah, I'll look at just the Roberts' orders briefly, and basically, I mean, this body, there's a motion to approve, the majority can approve it, and the body doesn't have to approve it.
Right.
So.
So the motion notwithstanding, we can move forward. So, again, I will entertain a motion to approve the boundaries for the Winterville historic boundaries for the Historic Preservation Commission.
I move that we adopt the currently drawn HPC boundaries for the City of Winterville, provided by the HPC and the map drawn by NEGRC.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And one thing I will discuss, since this stream seems to be working and some citizens might be watching from home, these boundaries do not include Winter Hills, they do not include Parkview, and they do not include the Commercial District. So we have removed it and pared it down quite a bit. And there is a version of this, this map on the city website under important links, so if you'll go to the city's website, you'll see what's being approved tonight. So any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Did you get all that, Wendy? Okay. All right, moving on, HPC guidelines, same. We have had our public hearings and citizens have weighed in, the commission has done their work, we have done ours, the regional commission has done their work, helping us, guiding all of us through that, so I will entertain a motion to approve the HPC guidelines.
I move that we approve the HPC guidelines for the City of Winterville as written by the HPC. Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have further discussion.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank our HPC, they have put in hundreds or thousands of hours of work into this, so just thank you to everybody. Thank you to all the citizens, too, who have come to the public hearings, and it feels good to do this tonight. So thank you, guys.
And, and thank you for that. So any further discussion?
I would also like to thank the commission, but I would also like to say ahead of my vote that I think this is a burden on our citizens, and it's too much for a community this size. And, and I also feel like we have a lot of ordinances that are already not enforced.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, and thank you to the HPC, Jonathan, and that's a, this is a big deal for the city, and it's been in, it's been in the conference of plan for 30 years, 30 years.
Thanks for doing the hard work to get it done and across the finish line, and thanks to everybody, and thanks to the council for working hard. We've, we've had it, I think, for over a year, the guidelines and the boundaries, so we took our time, right? And it's, it's a, it's a good thing for the city long-term. So we will make sure that the boundaries, the approved boundaries and guidelines are up on the website as soon as we can, so that citizens can take a look at everything, at the edited, and where the final draft fell, came down, as well as the boundaries. So look for that, and we'll, we'll let you know on social media and through our, through our different channels when it's up and available.
Okay, moving on, mask mandate extension through December, I think it's a good idea, I'm pretty sure everybody here does, so if we would like to vote to extend that through December, what's the, what would be the second Tuesday in December?
15th.
15th, if we'd like to vote to extend that through the 15th and take it back up at that point, I'll entertain a motion to do so.
So looking at the calendar, we don't meet again until January 5th, and then the 12th is our meeting, is our January meeting?
December.
Sorry, no, I'm looking until like, because after we meet, December 15th, we won't see each other until after the holidays, so I didn't know if we wanted just to set it until December 31 or no.
I think we'll go ahead and just do the December, and if we want to re-up it then.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody, just to look at it month to month. Does that make sense? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to extend it to December 15th.
I move that we extend the mask mandate through December 15th.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on, library story signs, and I put this on here just so we could have a vote, because it's just deciding which way to go with this. We talked about it, Deidre, last week, of whether we, the park or the trail. I think you said the backup, the trail as a backup is fine. Tom, you prefer the trail for the story signs? You've got 20 of the story signs, is that correct, or more?
I think it's not quite 20.
Okay, and you wanted to leave them up for a month?
Yes, I'm willing to work with you, but we, you figure about a month.
Okay, and I, and honestly, I'm okay either place, so I'll just entertain a motion. If there's, is there a preference from the library? Is there, was there a preference for the park for a reason?
Excuse me, we just thought it might be more attractive because of the way the sidewalk lines around, and didn't know how you would feel frankly about sticking those signs on your beautiful main street.
Right.
They're interesting up close, but I know they're not very attractive from just.
Well, and, you know, we just need to be careful with that, you know, but we've had the art show along the trail, and it was very popular, and, and this isn't advertising, this is promoting our library and education. So I don't see a problem with it, but I'm okay in the park, I really, you know, Tom, do you, y'all have a problem with the, with the signs in the park?
No, the only thing, the trail gets a little more on location.
And that's what I'm thinking in December, with the cool weather, the park kind of slows down, but the trail may not, because it's out in the sun.
That's a good point.
So.
That's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
So let's, since we, since we're going to put them on the trail, let's, could I have a motion to approve the library story signs going along the Firefly Trail for the month of December, is that correct, or are we just going, we're going, we're going to go about 30 days when they go down, when they?
When they get up.
Okay, okay. So December, January. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to put the story signs from the library on the trail through December and early January.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Look at you going with the second.
Tell me I could do the second.
So thank you for that. And Deidre, I think that's great, and, and the reason to vote is because it is going to be on, and right away in public property, so we just need to look at those case by case, so we don't have a whole lot of signs popping up from all over the place, right? Okay, so moving on, Winterville Volunteer Fire Department equipment vote, and the guys are here. We talked last night, there's a big list, but we've kind of got it down to the priority for now, which is hose. And this will come out in 2020 SPOF, and the, I think the Safety Committee might have that quote and a recommendation for us for the hose that was gathered, the quote that was gathered yesterday. We'll need to factor in a bit of shipping and freight if we pass it tonight, but that, that piece of equipment is, has a 30, depending on where we get it, it could have a 30-week lead time.
Up to.
Up to a 30-week lead time. We may be able to get some of it off the shelf, but a lot of it may.
So, so the council understands that there's three companies that have been bidding for the equipment, you're taking the lowest on two, the two lowest, and kind of split up the hose order between both of them to see if it's faster. It's the same hose, they're both dealers of the same exact hose, so we're not getting two different selections, but one states that they have a little bit on the shelf they can part with, and one says 30 weeks, so it's, but they're neck and neck on site.
They're literally $3 or $4 a roll within.
Okay. So, so does the Safety Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, but I have a question of how to word it, since we know the total, but we don't know the shipping total.
Okay. Up to?
Up to.
Up to?
Up to.
Include, include up to $1,000 freight over whatever dollar you have there.
So I would be careful, because our freight industry is upside-down right this moment, nationwide, and I'm just a little nervous that we'll have to go up to North Carolina to go get it at $1,000. We're talking a lot of weight.
Right.
Fire hoses, there's 1,200 feet of 3-inch fire hose, which probably will be what, 38 or 40 pounds a roll, and there's going to be 24 of those, and so it's just, I would, in history, I don't work in the safety industry anymore, but I would say maybe ask for like, say 5% to go towards freight, and it'd be actual. I mean, we're only going to pay the actual, and if I can try to get somebody, you know, I'm going to try to, in the morning, be on the phone with these guys and see if they can drive some of it to us, do whatever I can, but I just don't want it to come in at 1,010, and then I've got to wait to come back again, and we go 30 more weeks. I'm just.
Yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't we approve the cost on the hose, because that's going to be the lead time?
Yep.
Figure out, and then we'll figure out what the shipping is, and we'll approve that shipping at a different date. So let's approve just the money for the hose tonight.
Once we place the order?
Then we'll know.
We should know exactly before the hose ships what it's going to cost.
Yep, and then we'll have a concrete number.
And I'm going to fight for free shipping.
Yeah.
I promise you.
Yeah.
We drive the truck up and get it.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Could we have a statement of the hose cost for the record?
Yeah.
Yes, apologies.
$12,809.
73 cents.
And 73 cents.
12, 809, 73?
Yep.
Okay, 12, 809, 73.
And if we use 5% potential shipping, that's 650.
I know, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's, let's just stick with the hose right now, get the hose ordered, and then we'll get the, we'll get the freight taken care of.
All right.
So, okay, so 12, 810?
Yeah, 12, 809, 73.
Yeah.
12, 810, yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve?
I would make the motion to approve that we buy the fire hose needed for our new truck at 12,008, 10, and look at our shipping cost at a future date.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. 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 All right. Moving on, Green Metals Business License Application, we received this last week at workshop. Anybody got any questions? We're ready to approve. Got a recommendation from planning and zoning, I believe, on that one? Yep, so we're good to go on that. So, do I have a motion to approve Green Metals Business Application in the City of Winterville?
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I heard three.
I, I was having trouble recalling it, and we don't have a copy, so I guess I'll abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Business license is approved. Uh, moving on, Russell Cochran, Airbnb, Winter, I just had it in front of me. Winterville Ha, Winterville Haven?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so this falls within our acceptable use. This did go through planning and zoning, but y'all, y'all had a no decision, right? Because we just weren't sure, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I don't think we really knew.
Yeah.
What the rules were, we even, we even thought there might still be a moratorium on it.
Yeah.
Is there not?
There's not a moratorium, but there, our ordinance does define it now. And, um, David and I took a look at it that day, and this is an allowable use, so there's no issue from the city on this.
There's some document we can follow, so that we can help with that.
Yes, yes, and we'll get that.
Does the applicant reside at, at the place of business?
Yeah. Yeah. They do indeed. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the application.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries, thank you. All right. So, that gets us through our agenda, um, and welcome our new councilperson. She's made it through our, her first, uh, old unfinished business and new business, so welcome, Melissa. We're glad to have you. And, um, after the election last week, uh, we'll have a new councilperson starting in January, Bruce Johnson in the back, and Gary winning reelection, so congratulations to all. Moving on to committee reports. Public Finance Councilperson, Snow.
I'm glad to report again that our city finances are in good shape. The clerk has prepared a financial statement, and it's available on request from Wendy, and, uh, I'm, I'm really pleased that our revenues have maintained, even with some of the downfalls we've had over the last year or so. And, uh, it's been a big surprise to us, as, as much as it is to anybody else. And we're real pleased, and, and our department heads have done a great job in holding their expenses. So, we're, we're in pretty good shape going into the end, end of the year.
And if you don't mind, something I'd like to, uh, report that I think I brought up at workshop last week, and Wendy and I have kept an eye on this since, since I took office almost six years ago. At that point, um, coming into office, there were $226,000 in the reserve for the city, which is not a lot. It had been $600,000 years previous to that. And, um, just in the last few weeks, we've gotten that back up over $400,000 in the reserve, and over $100,000 in our, um, general fund. So, we've worked hard, and also been able to do a lot of projects around the city at the same time, and, um, which is, which is good, and, and everybody deserves a lot of credit for that. Tom, Wendy, thanks for all the help, council. The city's in good shape, and we're gonna continue to do that, and continue to, to put money back into the reserves as we can throughout the years, so to keep the city healthy, um, throughout situations like we're in now, the pandemic, so. Thank you all for that. So, um, does that conclude your report here?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Public Safety Councilperson's, Mooney and Snow.
Yes, we've received reports from both our fire and police. If anybody is interested in seeing particular call detail, um, those reports are available to the public. We, as you just saw, um, got some needed supplies for the new fire truck, and we have welcomed a new police officer as well to the city. Anything I am leaving out, or anybody wants to add?
See if you got anything you need to add to that.
What about the 50 days on ARP?
Haven't figured out, I need to, yeah. Working on that. Okay, does that conclude your report?
Yes.
All right. Public Works Councilperson's, Mooney and Keen.
We have not met as Public Works Committee, but there have been a lot of meetings happening around the, project, uh, the bathroom project. Tom, do you wanna speak to that?
Just, uh, we had two bids on the plumbing and two bids on the electrical. We had a low bid on, on both the plumbing and the electrical, and we had a high bid on both the electrical and the plumbing. And we, as a committee, wanted to know why there was so much difference. So, I reached out and tried to get a hold of the, uh, the guy, the person that bid on it, and, uh, he hasn't responded yet about meeting with us. So, that's kind of on hold for a little while, until, until we have a meeting, and make sure that there, there's no hidden costs or anything like that in, in their bids.
Right.
And, uh, but otherwise, we, uh, Steve mostly, but we worked on the backstage area, and it's all, all framed in, but about an hour or two worth.
Yeah.
So, that's all, that's all done.
Yeah. So, and if you walk into the auditorium now, you'll see all the work, and, and Tom's shy about it, but they've worked really hard, and, and the bathrooms are all laid out, and you can see what it's gonna look like in the future, it looks great. And, and again, our Public Works team is saving us money, saving the city money, so we appreciate that, and doing great work too. Anything else from Public Works?
And just wanted to thank all the citizens that showed up for the Auditorium Work Day to give a hand.
Yep.
And then, Tom, sorry, did you have one more thing?
The roof was replaced last, a week ago now, and the painters are gonna be here 15th of December to paint. Paint the depot, the bookstore, and the police department. And when we had our celebration at, uh, for George Park, I had, I had a premonition that when they were painting the bookstore, it oversprayed onto our mural. It was just a premonition, but I'll take care of it if it comes out.
You just, I just.
And the last, the last thing I have is, last spring, our marigold round in the park collapsed, it, 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 uh.
It gave up?
And we.
I had nothing to do with that.
A lot of trouble getting the parts. And I have to say that they worked really hard at it, the people that sold us that equipment, and they installed it for free, and the parts were free.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Great. Great, thank you, does that conclude your report?
Did you want to add anything?
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, so, moving on, Winterville Campus, I don't see David, Matthews, Morgan anywhere. Doctors Museum Report, anything to report?
Uh, just finished a quick fundraising season that was conjunction with the concert series, raised about $300 or so for the museum, uh, which went into, uh, upgrading and finalizing network infrastructure, and also, uh, temperature and fire control. So.
Great.
We're healthy.
Great, and you'll be a big part of the Historic Athens event, uh, I'm sure.
December 12th, yes, sir.
Yep. Um, and, uh, I'll get to it in my report, but also December 3rd, if you're available, you'll, you'll hear it in a second. Is there anything else to report? Okay, Marigold Market, Sherry is not here. As you all know, we did receive a grant, a $68,000 grant from USDA, that we'll begin working on in the new year, so that's exciting. Library Report, Deidre?
Okay, just wanted to give you all the heads up that we'll be closed tomorrow for, uh, Staff Development Day.
Okay.
We have that every year. Hannah and I both received our Pfizer boosters over at the Doctors' Museum. They were very, very painful. But we would do it again. For the last few days, the library's been closed due to plumbing issues.
Right.
And I really want to thank Tom again for seeing that that was all taken care of, because I know he's busy. He said that the plumber's found a big log paper towel, so it had been flushed. This happened right after Storytime last. So, I suspect he's responsible.
Hide the paper towel rolls next time you have Storytime.
I'm afraid it was not at fault.
The outdoor Storytime is going to continue through November. During December, uh, we're just going to have online stories. And then, starting in January, and continuing through February, we're going to have inside Storytimes with pre-registration. The number of attendees hasn't been determined yet. A book club had its first meeting inside, and we have plenty of room, so everybody was spread out at least five feet apart. Everybody was masked, so we're going to continue, uh, probably through March. We're going to get with Wendy and Jan and Kathy Mulcrone to talk about the Winter, the Winterville Holiday, and we don't know if she's going to participate.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to say how nice that Chandler Park dedication was. I attended that with my husband, and it was very moving and lovely.
Thank you, it was.
And then, um, still working on getting some artists of us together, and maybe a very special surprise next month, but, uh, but he's all in next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you do at our library. Okay, Clark's Report, Wendy? Okay. All right, City Attorney's Report, David?
Your report.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, let me touch on several things here, but try to make it quick. So, uh, we do have, still have a broadband grant that we are seeking, that we wait, we hope to hear back from, uh, the state on that soon. We still are waiting here on a solar grant that we have out there for the auditorium, which will, uh, would be great for that campus. We need committee members, um, citizens, we need committee members for planning, we need planning to fill a planning, planning and zoning seat, uh, the Library Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Citizens Advisory Commission for T.S.P.O.S.T. and S.P.O.S.T. in the city. So, you can apply here at City Hall for those, come get an application and fill it out. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors. We do have a new police officer, Brian Freeze, who's making fast friends in the, in the city. So, if you see him, say hello. Thanksgiving, you'll start to see the same thing we did last year at, at, actually at our house, where we'll be receiving meals from the community to disperse out to those in need. The night before Thanksgiving, we'll do that, so you'll start to see the sign-up sheet like you did last year. Cameron and Shawanda and Sherry will be putting all that out and putting that together for the community. So, be on the lookout for that, so we can help those in need, help the other guy and gal. December 3rd, we are talking about having a holiday in the square, Christmas on the square, instead of in the park this year, due to several different factors, and the fact that children had not been vaccinated yet, but the vaccine, vaccine is offered. We're not planning on having a Santa Claus and children seated in a, in Santa's lap, but we are planning on doing something on the square in conju, in partnership with the Methodist Church, and possibly the Friends of the Winterville Library and the library, and hopefully the Doctors' Museum, so that we can have all our buildings open for that event from 6 to 8 December 3rd. Uh, Winterville Elementary will be a part of that, they're gonna bring the kids over and sing on the stage. Uh, talked about with the principals today, so they're all, they're all in for that. And it may, may be something that we do moving forward a little differently than having it in the pavilion and the big giveaway that we do, but rather have it more of a community event and celebrate the kids and all of our, you know, local attractions and, and what have you, and the library and the, and bookstore. So, um, you'll hear more about that, and I think all, everybody's meeting to discuss all those plans now. December 12th, Historic Athens will be having their gala in the city, Sunday from 4 to 7. So, we will have a lot of citizens from Athens, Clark County, and members of the Historic, Historic Athens coming out to see our city and tour four, five homes, I think, that are on the tour. So, I think, um, invitations went out, I saw today, to all their members, and they'll start advertising that. So, look for that, we're gonna dress the city up. Judy Logue, one of our citizens who's so sweet and has decorated, helped Tom and, and us decorate the city for the last several years. Hopefully, uh, this isn't her last year, but it might be. So, we're kind of pulling out all the stops and decorating the city and getting it ready for everybody to come see it, so you'll see a little extra pizzazz with regard to holiday decorations around the city. Thank you for saying that about the park dedication, that was a fantastic event, and now we have a beautiful amenity out there that every, I, it's so great to see people out there sitting and meandering around and reading the, reading the template, or the, 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 uh, Civitan Creed, um, and spending time in that park, and I think that dedication was, it was a really pretty day, and I'm glad everybody was there, and I'm glad the community was out and, and is enjoying the park today. As we said, muni code, our code will be, uh, we'll have a draft of our legalized code, or our revised code in, uh, after Thanksgiving, which council will review, and then we'll begin to work with planning and zoning to amend some of our ordinances, to make those fit the city better, and, and in today's time. And then to bump that against the historic preservation and make sure there are clear-cut pathways for both organizations, the committee and the, and the commission, with regard to code and guidelines, right? So, we'll, we'll begin to work on that. And we should also be getting, um, hearing from our auditing firm in the next week or so to present their audit to the city for 2021, 2020, to catch us up, um, for the last couple of years of, of city audits, city financing. That's it. Oh, and a couple of, uh, events in the auditorium, so December 10th, we'll be showing It's a Wonderful Life in the auditorium, so I think we're just doing donations for that, I think we've done, the auditorium's doing that. So, we'll be showing It's a Wonderful Life at 7 o'clock, December 10th, in the auditorium. And December 20th, the Good Grief Trio, that does the Charlie Brown soundtrack, Christmas from front to back, they will be in the auditorium to set up Monday, December 20th, that night, so. Go on the Community Center website, Auditorium's website, and you can, and check out all the information about that. That's all I got, and we'll stop there. No, I'm not. We're gonna, um, Wendy's practicing her fiddle, so we're gonna go back to, um, finishing off the year and city and the council chambers in style next, uh, and, uh, the next meeting, so make sure you're here. That concludes my report, any public comments? Yes, sir?
There will be a sign up around the city in December.
What date?
We're thinking the 11th.
Okay.
Okay, awesome.
Which is Saturday.
Yes.
Did you get my email?
I did.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, I got you. I got it.
Now, you said that they're coming for the 12th for their dinner?
Yeah, the gala.
We'll plan the, then for, uh, uh, throughout all the subdivisions on the 11th.
Okay, that's perfect.
We're probably gonna do it during the day, so he can be seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he's gonna be seen.
I haven't picked it up yet, but there is a check meeting in commercial night to help buy a ticket.
That's awesome.
Correct.
That's very nice.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna miss the Santa Claus. Any other comments from the public? Okay, any announcements?
I have a question. Since there can only be one government official on the DDA, I was wondering who, who's going to resign?
Yeah, we actually have a email out to the, to GMA about that.
Yeah.
And we have our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, and that's on our agenda.
Yeah, we're working through that, good question.
That's a good question.
And again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good for here.
Any other announcements, anybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have a mobile vaccine drive happening in the city this Thursday morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. It's being put on by the Firefly Community Homeschool, um, Director, I suppose. And she worked with the Department of Public Health to get them out here, so it's for kids or if adults need their booster, so it's from 9:00 to 11:00, no appointment needed. So, Thursday, 9:00 a.m.
At the auditorium or the community center?
It's the community center, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, at the community center, okay. All right. And Clark County School District announced that they'll be having some clinics as well in the coming weeks, so that's good news, so we'll share that information once we get that. Okay, any other announcements? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.